I knew that. Hey Liz Torres, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Okay, great. You're unmuted and good to go once we get to that part of the meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
Good evening. This is city council regular meeting on May 5th, 2025, 5:30. Could we have the reading of the, call the order, call the order, yeah.
Who's like roll call?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Beal.
Here.
Councilor Gonzalez. Absent, Councilor Coso.
Present.
Mayor Protem Woodruff.
Here.
And Mayor Yazi.
Here. Now could we have the reading?
This is a call to honor and respect indigenous sovereignty and self-determination. As residents and visitors of Durango, we are called upon to educate ourselves about the history and cultural heritage of the land we inhabit. The city of Durango is situated on the ancestral homelands and territories of the Nuchu, Ute, Hicarria, Apache, Apache, Pueblos of New Mexico, Hopi-Sinam, Hopi, and Dene-Navajo nations. The original stewards of this land were forcibly removed and exposed to countless atrocities by the United States government, including repeatedly broken treaties, forced assimilation, the tragic legacy of Indian boarding schools, and the loss of ancestral homelands. We recognize lasting generational trauma exists within native communities today. We affirm the continuing importance of ancestral sites to descendant communities as integral to the living cultural landscape. This acknowledgement only becomes meaningful when combined with accountable relationships and informed actions. May this serve as a step towards inclusion and reconciliation.
The next item on the agenda, mayor, is the introduction of the translator. Tom, is the translator available?
Yes, hi. My name is Liz Torres and I am here with my colleague, B Torres, with CLC. And today, we are going to practice language justice so that everyone can be hearing and speaking in the language of their heart. So in order to access the language, you will go into the more menu and languages, speech, and then go to interpretation and language. And if you have any trouble, just raise your hand. Muy buenas tardes, mi nombre es Liz Torres y estoy aquí con mi colega, B Torres. El día de hoy vamos a interpretar simultáneamente. Y si usted tiene alguna pregunta o tiene algún problema, por favor levante su mano. Si usted necesita interpretación, puede tener acceso por el menú de más o de more, que son los tres puntitos. Y así usted podrá seleccionar inglés o español. And we can go ahead and get started.
The next item on the agenda, mayor, is opening remarks by mayor and council.
Doesn't look like we have any opening remarks.
Yeah.
Oh, you might.
Yeah, I would please. I just wanted to say, I attended an excellent RHA summit last week. Gilda, you were there as well. I thought that was really well done and an excellent tutorial on housing. Had numerous conversations with several business owners on things like next steps, minimum wage, easy decisions in front of council that are coming up. And I appreciated the patience that both staff and the council has shown to the newbie. And appreciate the ongoing patience you'll be showing, so thank you.
Thank you, Kip. And I do welcome any questions or inquiries so you become up to speed on everything that's happening, but I think you're doing very well, so thank you.
The next item on the agenda is presentations and proclamations, with the first item being the mayor's youth advisory commission tax reauthorization survey report led by the staff liaison, Ben Florin, our chief deputy clerk.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Ben Florin, chief deputy clerk and staff liaison to the mayor's youth advisory commission. And I'm going to introduce John Womack and Julia Fernandez. And they're going to debrief our tax reauthorization survey that we had at Durango High School.
Hello, I'm John Womack. Thank you for your time.
I'm Julia Fernandez. Once again, thank you for your time.
To start off, we went to the Durango High School to start this survey. We surveyed eighty-three students total. And we started off this survey with going over with our group what the survey was about. And we decided that the youth needed to voice their opinions on this and give their input into council. We started by narrowing down the project lists of items that we would found important to the community and the youth. And then we finalized three projects that we thought would be supported on kind of a broader scale. Those five projects were indoor turf fields, river trail expansion, new exercise facilities, youth resource centers, and others, so people could voice their own ideas. Each student was given three coins to put in a jar. And under those jars were what those projects would be. And we got, so eighty-two students got three votes each and a total of two hundred forty-six votes cast. We had a hundred and three for new exercise facilities. This was our largest number. River trail came in second, indoor turf facilities in third, and youth resource center in fourth. And we had nine other suggestions and those were kind of right under resource center. It was more of like, like a place, a safe place for kids to like spend their time.
Here's a visual representation of our data.
The youth want more access to fitness and a wider assortment of fitness facilities. Teens value the river trail for opportunities it provides, like travel, exercise, and gatherings. It's also one way that teens can get around town safely. Teens want year-round access to sports despite seasonal changes, so that could include hockey rinks or indoor turf fields. And thank you for your time once again.
Well, thank you. Very much.
The next item on the agenda is proclamation, is a proclamation celebrating May as Historic Preservation Month.
Alrighty. We have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as Historic Preservation Month. Whereas in nineteen sixty-six, the National Historic Preservation Act was signed into law by Lyndon B. Johnson. This legislation established a national register of historic places and state historic preservation policies along with the state tribal historic preservation officers. And whereas in nineteen seventy-three, the National Register of Historic Preservation established May as National Historic Preservation Month. And whereas the city of Durango continues to demonstrate its commitment to the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic properties. And whereas preserving our historic resources is vital to maintaining the character and heritage of the city of Durango. And whereas the city of Durango Historic Preservation Board actively works to protect historically significant properties in the city. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Gilda Yazi, mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-five as Historic Preservation Month.
The next item on the agenda, mayor, is presentation and recognition of Ben Florin, Master Municipal Clerk Certification. Did you want to lead off with that?
Well, sure.
City manager update, so I did not, I can, I can do the presentation if you'd like.
Do the presentation, I'll just lead off on it.
Mayor and council, it is always an honor to recognize our employees when they've gone above and beyond to continuously improve themselves in their profession. So Fay has a awesome recognition to highlight to the council and the community of Ben's outstanding work and continuous improvement for himself, and as well as will reap the benefits of that with the organization. So I'll hand it over to Fay to talk a little bit more about what Ben has accomplished.
Thank you. Almost exactly two years ago, I was standing here accepting my Master Municipal Clerk Certification. Tonight, I'm honored to present the same certification to Ben Florin, our chief deputy clerk. A Master Municipal Clerk accreditation is a long process. It requires the first step, which is a certified municipal clerk certification, which requires about four hundred hours of classes that you have to take. So this is kind of a visual representation of the classes. To become a Master Municipal Clerk, you have to take just a few more classes, which is about another additional four hundred hours, investing a total of about eight hundred hours in this one certification. In Colorado, only about ten percent of clerks have their Master Municipal Clerk Certification. And nationally, only fourteen percent of clerks have this high certification. In addition, there are only four other cities that we found in Colorado that have two Master Municipal Clerks and all have much larger populations than the city of Durango, double if not ten times. In addition to all of that, Ben is only one of three male Master Municipal Clerks in the state of Colorado. So the clerk's office here has always had a very high standard of professionalism. And now having two Master Municipal Clerks raises the bar to a whole new level for service both to the city and its citizens. And I want to congratulate Ben on achieving this and supporting our core values of professionalism and service.
Thanks Fay. I'll just keep it brief, but I came to the city of Durango in twenty fourteen and it's the fourth municipality I've worked for, but I've been here for eleven years just because I know it's a great organization and there's a heavy emphasis on professional development and support to, yeah, develop and bring your talents back and support the city of Durango. So, yeah, like Fay said, two years ago, we sat down and she really encouraged me to start pursuing my MMC. And in those past couple of years, and even prior to that, I probably spent like months away from home. So I do appreciate my family and my wife's support. And since my boys have been born, it's definitely been weeks and weeks that I've been away doing these trainings. So, and being down in this corner of the state, you know, we always have to put in a little bit more effort than being up on the front range. So I appreciate my family's support and the organization's support. And looking forward to keeping these talents and these two MMCs here in Durango as a great knowledge base for our town and the community, so.
The next item on the agenda, mayor, is committee and board and liaison reports.
I don't know how you follow that, but I'm gonna try. I had my community office hours, almost didn't have them, but thank goodness, we got a crack team that we were able to kind of pivot and make it happen. So I had mine on the April sixteenth. I talked about everything from the minimum wage to Vision Zero, line needs development code, pedestrian safety, Smart One sixty, and rim drive safety and trash pickup. So lots of good, robust conversation had there. So thanks, everybody, for coming out for that. Also, I had wildfire and watershed protection fund meeting back in the later part of April. It's all about, you know, co-swap funding. After twenty twenty-six, like how are we going to fund our mitigation efforts within the county, ongoing mitigation? And the ultimate goal of this is to protect Durango's watershed, the Florida River. And so how we're doing that, what sort of wildfire action-ready plans that we have in place, modeling, where are the benchmarks for water quality, things like that. So really kind of given into the minutia, but we don't realize exactly how important the watershed is when you talk about ninety-five percent of our water comes from the Florida. It's incredibly important that we keep that mitigated and safe, so we all have a safe supply of water coming into the city of Durango. I also had a couple of different coffees with constituents. And then I met with county commissioner, March Porter Norton, and just, you know, informally talk about, you know, things going on within locally and regionally and just kind of getting to know each other a little bit better and how we move forward collectively with the same common goals. So it was, yeah, proactive three weeks.
The first four months of this year were psycho and I ignored work for too long. And so I spent the last few weeks catching up on work after finishing my mayor duties and done campaigning. But today, I had Ameritown interviews at Needham Elementary School. So I interviewed Ameritowns, like this fake town that they do. And they applied to be the campaign and they run to be mayor and judge. And I got to interview everyone that wanted to be the mayor and the judge, and I told them to run away, be the snack shop coordinator. That's what, it was another position, but I know, I got to interview all them and they were fantastic and had great ideas and was super fun. So that was really the only thing I did tomorrow. I have the alliance and I'm back to my normal council, back in the game. Here I am.
No boards and committees at this point, so don't have much to report here. Maybe I talked about the RHA a little bit, but I think you'll hit that, mayor.
Well, we'll get you some boards pretty soon here. Okay, so on April twenty-second, I met with the ice rink hockey people for the walk and roll for the mayor. And I got a lot of good insight into what their expectations are and what the city's expectations are and how we would move forward. So they're going to work on getting together their information and hopefully sometime during the summer or something, we'll meet again. And then on the same day, the twenty-second, at four PM, it was the mayor's youth council again. And we had a meeting to review the cowboy poetry poems. And so they were rating the poems. So there's probably maybe six or seven, I guess they're high schoolers, rating the poems. And so that was really interesting. Ben was there, was in charge of that also. So on the twenty-third, that was Ammonist High School job fair. And so that was just about civic engagement. Also, the rec center was up there doing a job fair. So we just kind of had a rotating group of students come through and ask us questions about, you know, where they could get jobs, what do you do? And so that was very fruitful because I got to meet some of the high school students. And then April twenty-fifth, I had a Zoom with the National League of Cities with their indigenous leaders of America. So we were just talking about what to do going long-term, considering some of the federal budget cuts that are coming down. So I'll keep going to that Zoom meeting. On the twenty-eighth, I attended the five PM community, community development committee here at city hall and listened to what they, they proposed to. And they also want to have outreach with the council here. So I had talked to Jose about that, so we'll work on getting something in place for that. On the twenty-ninth was, Kip and I, we went to the Regional Housing Alliance Housing Summit. It was held at the Doubletree. So I thought the conference was very well presented. They had some wide-ranging topics and it was giving great information about how to go forward on a regional level with workforce housing. go forward on a regional level with workforce housing. And then on the 30th, also Kip went. It was the Welcome to the City for the West Side Mobile Home Park, and so that was from 5:00 to 6:00 PM down here on Highway West 160, and so we just had some snacks and talked to the residents there about what the city offers, and also Kate Clancy was there, and several other community members were there, talking to the residents, just giving them a feel for what it's about, being part of the city. On May 1st, I did a radio interview with K D U R, so that'll come out probably next week or the week after. So they just asked me general questions about the city and how it feels to be mayor. And then also on that same day, the 1st, I did a job fair at Durango High School, also for the mayor's youth council, and the rec department was there because they're looking for part-time high school students to fill some of the job posts there. And then 5:00 PM on May 1st, that was the Fab meeting here in City Hall, so that was interesting, listening to their proposals for the coming year. And then on May 3rd, that was Fort Lewis College's commencement ceremony, so I attended that for the city, and I was thankful that I had a chance to meet some of their outgoing students. And of course, I plugged the city that there's jobs here, and I think they were happy that the city showed up to be represented there. And don't forget, on Thursday, May 8th, at noon, I have office hours at the Durango Library from noon to 1:30.
Next item on the agenda is public comment on action items only. Tom, do you have the recording for us?
Public comment is encouraged on agenda items set for consideration and a vote by the council tonight. Public comments on items not set for consideration by the council come later in the meeting. Please begin your comments by stating the agenda items set for a vote you intend to speak on, your full name, and if you are a resident of the city of Durango. Make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by the council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to the item you identified when you began your comments. Profanity, hate speech, personally derogatory remarks, speech unrelated to the item you identified, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair, and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits. Please note, US sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak.
Oh, Mayor, we do have three people signed up, but they are only signed up under item 13, not under this item, so no one has signed up under this item.
All righty, let's move on to the next, and we'll call in at 13.
The next item is the consent agenda. With your permission, Mayor, I will go ahead and do a reading of the consent agenda. Item 8.1 is approval of minutes. 8.11 is approval of the minutes of the city council regular meeting held on April 15th, 2025. 8.2 is final reading of ordinances with 8.2.1 being ordinance 2025-021, accepting conveyance of Lot 14 of the Durango Mesa Park Foundation to the city of Durango. 8.2.2 is final reading of ordinance 2025-22, enacting a violation for parking in private parking lots on private property, Chapter 24, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Parking Administration and Regulation, Section 24-81, parking motor vehicles on private property. 8.2.3 is a final reading of ordinance 2025-23, amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 1, application and adoption of the Model Traffic Code, Section 24.2, Model Traffic Code adopted. 8.2.4 is final reading of ordinance 2025-24, amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 4, penalties and procedures. 8.2.5 is final reading of ordinance 2025-25, amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, Noise, Section 16.8, unreasonable noise prohibited. 8.2.6 is final reading of ordinance 2025-26, amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 17, Article 8, offenses related to weapons, Section 17-121, firearms and other deadly weapons in public buildings prohibited. 8.3 is adoption of resolutions by consent with 8.3.1 being a resolution approving the appointment of Gloria Platt as Chief Financial Officer. 8.3.2 being a resolution approving the allocation of Round 1, 2025 Durango Creates Funding. 8.3 is a resolution to approve the local event marketing grant, Round 1, for 2025 awardees. 8.3.4 is a resolution approving an easement for La Plata Electric Association to provide electric utility service to a Tesla Supercharger Station at the Durango Transit Center. 8.4 is approval of administrative items with 8.4.1 being approval of a beer and wine liquor license for Cork and Larder LLC doing business as Cork and Larder at 120 West 8th Street. There are no requests for public hearings. Moving on to 8.6, which is introduction of ordinances. 8.6.1 is introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Parking Administration and Regulation. 8.6.2 is introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 23, Article 2, Section 23-30, items exempt from tax. Item 8.6.3 is introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 21, Article 4, obstruction on public property, Section 21-51, written permission required. 8.6.4 is introduction of an ordinance authorizing the city of Durango to execute a lease renewal agreement with King Capital LLC to continue leasing Suite G and H of the building located at 900 Main Avenue, Durango 813101, and there is no request for excused absences.
All righty, thank you. Would any council like to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Mayor, can I please pull 8.6.1 from the consent agenda?
8.6.1, yes.
So the next item would be 8.6.1, which, oh, I'm sorry, you need to vote on the consent agenda first, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus 8.6.1.
Second. Seconded. Roll call, please.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Percham Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Coso?
Yes.
So now items removed from the consent agenda would be 8.6.1, introduction of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Parking Administration and Regulation.
Thank you, Fay and Mayor. Mark, I just wanted to get some clarification. We talked briefly about this before, about a potential conflict, but I also was just wondering, does this include commercial vehicles as well? So if there's a commercial vehicle making stops and delivering goods to anywhere in town, would that, would they be inclusive? Would they have to shut their engine off every time to be in compliance?
Maya from my office, implement those. And at introduction, I'm not as familiar with them with the times you vote on them, but when we did glance over it at the beginning before the meeting started, and just generally, I did not see an exception for commercial vehicles. And that would typically, that's typically not the case in parking. I mean, although they don't get special permission to park places for commercial vehicles.
Right, and it wasn't necessarily the parking provision, it was, it was the part about idling and unintended vehicles and remaining an idle.
Sure. And just for, I mean, that's, the state legislature has put over, over time, has put those restrictions in place, so people aren't letting their cars idle to warm up and create next pollution and encouraging theft and all those kind of things. It seems like they made a change between 2010 and 2024 that we're trying to catch back up with. I'll get with Maya and review that, and I can talk to you privately about it before the next meeting if it gets introduced, or if you want us to wait a meeting. We're on the last seven of all these changes we've been making. If you want to just pull this one, we can introduce it with the next batch, it's up to you.
No, I think we can introduce it. I just, yeah, maybe just some clarification, maybe it's not a big deal, maybe they do shut off their engines, I just, yeah, I just don't want to make anything more onerous for businesses or for people trying to deliver goods to those businesses.
And we can always, we don't, we can always modify the state model code. If there's something in there that we don't want to do in Durango, we can, we can change it. But we always meet the morning after these meetings and go through some questions that you guys had, so I'll get together with Maya and Jose and make sure that we have all of your questions answered about it.
Excellent, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve an introduction of an ordinance amending in pertinent part the Durango Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Parking Administration and Regulation.
Second. Roll call.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Mayor Percham Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is item 10, public hearings, 10.1 as a public hearing for the 32nd Street Collective Annexation and Initial Zoning, 364 County Road 251.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Daniel Murray presenting on behalf of Scott Shine, who had some travel delays due to weather. This is known as the 32nd Street Collective. It is both an initial zoning as well as annexation proposal. This is consistent with our strategic plan, which we are, sorry, mission, vision, and values, which we are always operating under, as well as our strategic plan, particularly for innovative housing when property is brought into the city. In this case, it has a residential land use, it creates more housing opportunities in the city. The reason why reliable infrastructure is called out is because 32nd Street has recently been improved, and there is a direct connection to when public investment occurs to improve street, vehicle, and multimodal functionality development follows, and that is what's occurring. Here we are on the north and eastern side of town, the subject parcel is the star. You see 32nd Street, and that's what's top of the screen. Zooming in a little further, this is the subject parcel. It's 1.9 acres, it's actually two parcels. You can see the faint gray line that distinguishes the left side of it. Those two parcels will be consolidated as part of this proposal, and what's important here is to observe that at least two-thirds of the parcel is pretty heavily vegetated, and it's rather steep. So the development portion of the property is down low adjacent to 32nd Street. This is the current condition, it's vacant, and you see in the right-hand side of the screen the flat developable portion, and then the sloping portion up to the left. The comprehensive plan contemplates all future land uses, of land that has potential to be annexed. So here you see a legend of different land use types. This is the darker orange, and that is residential medium density, and the density for that is anywhere from 5 to 11.9 units. So with roughly two acres, the most density that could occur here is 22 units. Given that topography, a realistic density would be closer to 12 units on this property. And this residential medium is the density that would come over and be the proposed zoning. So properties start out with future land use in our comprehensive plan, and then that becomes their zoning, which, as you can see, is the pattern of the 32nd Street corridor, that color of orange, so this will fit and continue with what is the existing type of There are several criteria for annexation as well as zoning, first being it is in compliance with our comprehensive plan. I mentioned how the proposed zoning continues the established pattern of land uses along 32nd Street. Second being that it won't create an unreasonable burden on the city when we bring land in, and this parcel in particular is largely seen as infill development. This is already feeling like part of the city, it's on a city road, it's 100% available to be served by city water services, police, all services are available to this property. And thirdly, the property would need to be zoned, and that is the residential medium proposal, and that fits with our standards. This is the plat that accompanies the annexation petition as well as the annexation agreement. You see the 1.9 acres standard description, and it also has the legal description. We're meeting several standards, not only for our land use code, but also state statute for annexation. One that you've commonly heard us reference is one-sixth contiguity. This parcel has 34% or greater than the 16% required contiguity, and that's what's being accomplished for the portion along 32nd Street, and then the property that borders on the east side is also adjacent to city limits. Touching again upon strategic plan alignment, it is meeting our goal for innovative housing and economic development opportunities, as well as our comprehensive plan to promote a variety of housing types within the city. There are no public comments received. The Planning Commission, or also known as our Community Development Commission, did consider and make a recommendation favorably to council in March 7:0 that this be approved, and at this time, this is the opening of the public hearing. No action needed, certainly available for questions and comments, and then I'll come back. It's the last item on your agenda when we introduce the first reading of the ordinance.
I moved to open, I moved to open the public hearing on 32nd Street Annexation and Initial Zoning.
Second.
Sorry, I just need to ask, when is there questions are allowed? We're just opening a public hearing, thank you.
Are you ready for a roll call, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Mayor Percham Woodruff?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, now we can do discussion.
No, we have to do a public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry, public hearing.
There is no one signed up to speak on this public hearing. The next item on the agenda is resolutions with 11.1 being a resolution to assign council liaisons to external boards, internal boards, and interview teams for boards and commissions. As you may remember, we had this item on the last agenda for discussion, there were recommendations made, and the recommendations that were made at that meeting are attached to the resolution for your approval tonight.
Yeah, I moved to approve a resolution to assign council liaisons to external boards, internal boards, and interview teams for boards and commissions.
I'll second.
Discussion, discussion. Anyone? No? Roll call.
Mayor, I appreciate it, but I communicated with Counselor Gonzalez, and I still have yet to hear back, so if something comes up, we'll take care of it down the line.
Okay, okay, I would like to make one change. I think that I would like to stay on the Regional Housing Alliance, since that's the one that you were in question about. So with that one change, I'd like to add that as a friendly amendment.
Are you? Yeah, I approve the friendly amendment to have counsel, I'm sorry, to have Mayor Yasi be a part of the RHA board, and then Counselor Coso would then transition to...
Whatever he discussed, sure. Whatever he discussed with Shirley.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Pertham Woodruff?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution to approving City of Durango and La Plata County Annexation Agreement for County Roads 250 and 251.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again, Mayor Yasi. Councillors, Daniel Murray, Community Development Department, taking us back to the same side of town. We're looking at what is our last step for the County Road 250, 251 project, and this is the annexation agreement. This is the subject corridor. It goes from Holly Avenue up to the intersection of 251, 250 and Metz Lane, shown in blue. Half this road is, was improved last year, and the other half is currently under construction. Zooming in a little more, this is one segment here. The relevant pieces when we went through annexation over the last series of months was the yellow portions show contiguity. This next strip is entirely contiguous, which allowed us to achieve our greater than 16%. The road design, if you're familiar with it, this is a great kind of before and after. In the foreground, you see the proposed road cross section, including five foot bike lanes, 11 foot travel lanes, and medians at intersections. And in the background is the existing conditions of an unimproved road. What's notable is what goes underground. All on that left side of the screen is the stormwater improvements, which has been lacking. So with any city street, we have an extensive stormwater infrastructure to handle runoff. Again, the same section of road, but the key piece here that wasn't shown in the previous slide was the 10-foot wide multi-use path, similar to what we experienced on Florida Road. A quick snapshot in terms of process, this began over 10 years ago with the city and the county recognizing the need for the road improvements. It went through a series of designs, and the process really became real and underway in 2024, when there was an intergovernmental agreement entered into, which allowed the two parties to recognize the need not only for public safety improvements when we make these types of construction projects, but also that it does stimulate economic development. I mentioned that other proposal, that this type of infrastructure does motivate developers, landowners to proceed with construction. So the intergovernmental agreement really brought the parties together and kicked off what has been about a six-month process for petition and annexation, which was accomplished most recently on March 11th. This is the final step, as I mentioned, for an annexation agreement to do three things. And I'll reference that here in this slide. First is summarizing all the documents, and there have been many to date. First is that intergovernmental agreement. Second is the joint annexation petition and the ordinance that council and council approved in March, as well as the Board of County Commissioners submitting their portion of the petition. And then the third agreement is Exhibit A and B for the annexation plat, all of which have been recorded. This agreement packages those together. I mentioned this being a step that deems it complete. That's an important milestone for the process, so the annexation agreement makes that explicit. And lastly, the land that is La Plata County, what Rose County Road 250, 251, is being conveyed to the city. That was consistent with the 2024 intergovernmental agreement. So everything is coming full circle. And this is under the overarching objectives of not only housing and economic development, certainly hitting the mark for reliable infrastructure, but also organizational stewardship in that this is a city-led project. This is consistent with our comprehensive plan that has called out this road as a key piece of our network in both the comprehensive plan and our 2030 Regional Transportation Plan, and underscoring how this does stimulate economic development when infrastructure is in place. At this time, the recommended motion is for approval, and that's what's in front of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-2025-0030 for the City of Durango and La Plata County Annexation Agreement for the joint annexation of County Roads 250 and 251, with authorization to the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of small questions. Within the agreement, the unit that is affordable housing. I'm sorry, I'm not on the, I'm on the wrong one.
I'll be right back to that.
Please excuse me. Thank you very much. Sorry, Mayor, I don't have any discussion here.
Seeing no more discussion, could we get a roll call?
Mayor Pertham Woodruff?
Yes.
Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is first consideration of ordinances with the first consideration of an ordinance for 32nd Street Collective Annexation and Initial Zoning, 364 County Road 251.
Is it okay? Just a motion, no presentation, right? Okay. I'll make a motion for a first consideration of an ordinance for the 32nd Street Collective Annexation and Initial Zoning, 364 County Road 251.
Second.
Discussion.
I believe I might. So back to this, in, in the affordable units, same finishes, the, the affordable unit isn't always similar to all the other units. Is that correct?
That's a detail I don't think we know yet, and that will come with the development proposal. And I can speak to the process that would come after annexation and zoning. So it's over 10,000 square feet, we think, what would go on this property. So it'd be subject to a major site plan review, and that goes to the Community Development Commission. There's also a special use permit, because we think it's going to be a mix of housing types and that townhome or condo, and so that warrants the SUP. So that process is still yet to kick off, and that would be the type of detail that could become clear.
Okay.
In terms of finishes.
Yes, Counselor Coso, if I may, just to be cautious, because it's an annexation. We're really not supposed to get into the details of what the development is going to be. That kind of tends us off to a little bit. That's not supposed to be part of the discussion. Sometimes staff historically has let council know if we know what it's going to be, but we try to separate those. So it could never be implied that that had a ruling or an effect on the council ruling for the annexation. So we're looking at ways to try to clean that up a bit. So really what it is, is the annexation of that lot as a multi, was it medium density, fitting in the zoning. Talking outside of that with regards to that, we need to fix that up internally. That can get us in a little bit of trouble, because we're not actually supposed to be considering that as part of this annexation.
Okay, and then considering the budget, where the budget for the subsidy comes from is also to be discussed later?
The project, the development and all of that would come back to the council at a different time.
Okay.
Well, it'll go back to the Community Development Commission unless you like it to come back.
Well, the budget would come through, I'd imagine, council on the subsidy if there was one ever given for that property.
Housing agreement, possibly.
Sorry, gentlemen, I, that, I missed it a little bit there. So when do I get an opportunity to ask about the affordable housing unit that is part of this development potentially?
That part in regards to the housing side is going to go through the conceptual plan on that side, correct? I mean, if the.
These are first applications of our fair share. So I don't want to misspeak. I can get you an answer, and I see that the applicant is online with his hand raised. If you want to potentially.
I think we probably should stay away from this. We're getting.
The legal problem with discussing the potential project at the time of annexation, it allows for discriminatory practices in annexation. So if someone's going to tell you what type of project they're bringing in, what they're going to cater to, then councils, not like this council, but other councils could use as a basis to regulate or engage in discriminatory housing projects.
Okay.
So when someone petitions to annexation, for annexation, we want you to consider that just, do we want this piece of property in our community for the type of development and the type of zoning that he's identified tonight? The details of the project, the funding of the project is, should be reserved for a later time. But those details will come in front of council at some point. There would seem to be a little bit of a disagreement there that I wasn't sure that it was coming to council or it was going to the.
It depends. Without knowing exactly what they're asking for, we're guessing, if you would, about what that development might be, what they might be looking for and how it would work.
Okay.
So it's like, it'd be me looking into a crystal ball to say, I, depending on what they ask for, yes. But if they don't, it may not, right? If they need funding and it's not budgeted, it's going to come to council. If there's some other parts into it that's going to, but I wouldn't know and be able to answer that definitively until we exactly knew what that project was going to look like.
Okay. The easy way to think about that is if someone was annexing in a five-acre piece of property to build one single family home, that would never come in front of the council, because all those standards are already set.
Got it.
Okay. If that helps. I'll reserve my right to ask, ask these questions a third time at some future time, so.
Okay, Daniel, I have one question. Okay, so there could be up to 22 units on this parcel. Is that what you said?
Could be hypothetical maximum.
But not over.
Density, but hard to imagine, given the topography.
No, all my questions are related to way further down the road. So the annexation, yeah, there's nothing to do with that, so thank you.
So someone said that the developer had their hand up, but the time for open or public hearing and the time for comment has already passed. But it's always your discretion if you want to, but you don't have to.
No, I think we should move on and keep it simple.
Okay, roll call, Mayor Yasi?
Yes.
Counselor Coso?
Yes.
Mayor Pertham Woodruff?
Yes.
And Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comment on city matters not scheduled for a vote tonight. Tom, could we have the recording, please?
Public comment is encouraged on city-related matters, even if they are not set, for consideration by the council on tonight's agenda. Please begin your comments by stating your city-related topic, your full name. And if you are a resident of the City of Durango, make your comments directly to the council. Do not expect a response from the council or staff. Comments are limited to three minutes per person unless modified by council. Unused time is not transferable to other speakers. Comments must be specific to city matters. Profanity, hate speech, personally derogatory remarks, or other speech that is disruptive to the meeting will be ruled out of order by the chair, and any remaining time will be forfeited by the speaker. Exceeding the time limit infringes on the rights of others and is out of order. Only a majority vote of the council can modify time limits. Please note, you must sign up prior to the mayor calling the item on the agenda. Signing up after the item is called will result in your name not being called to speak.
There are three people signed up to speak, Mayor. The first would be Frank Rife.
Thank you for this opportunity to come to the council. I represent, live in the 2800 block of East Second Avenue. And we have some health and safety concerns in that area and some ways we think can mitigate that at minimal kind of expense. One is the constant camping that goes on where 29th comes into East Second. And let me commend the police and the trail crews for responding and cleaning up the human waste, the drug paraphernalia, and the trash that just accumulates in that area. It's frequented by what looked like junior high and high school students coming back there. Maybe, I don't know what they're doing, but that's a traffic pattern. That 2800 block is used by dog walkers, kids walking to school. It's well-traveled. It's that issue of individuals who just show up and just, and then create problems and have actually jumped out at people and the residents are tired of it. The suggestion we have is something like you tore down the wall behind City Market to discourage the camping there. I've got a neighbor actually on that street who's got a ton of rocks and said, let's just put it in there. And so it makes it uncomfortable to be there. It's, it's been, I've been there for five years and it's gone on the whole time I've been here. And again, I've been in touch with Chief Gonzalez, and I have a meeting with Sergeant Cunningham next week to go through that area and actually walk it through. So that's the health issue, and we're concerned about the drug thing for sure. The other issue is that that's near that Atlas gas line, and there have been fires there during the winter. And I think the last thing we need is an explosion on that street. So that's a concern for everybody on that block. The other thing is the speeding that goes on as people come down 29th. I'm sorry, come down East Second. It appears they think they can go all the way through the town, and they can't. So they go back faster once they do the turnaround at the rucks area, realizing they can't go through. We've got young children on that street who are out learning to ride their bikes, playing with whatever. Parents are a little, very concerned. And so that's a safety issue. For us, placement of two stop signs would probably mitigate some of that and just stop that gunning coming down 29th. I'm coming, coming down East Second. They come down from 32nd, see that hill and just, and we've guessing they're scoring 40, 50 miles an hour. We don't know. It'd be nice to get a radar gun out there. But just again, they said the place to start was with you guys. I will do the walkthrough with Sergeant Cunningham next week and go from there. I don't know, this is my first time here, whether you guys want to ask me any questions, but I know I'm just about used up by three minutes. That's it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good feeling. It's, it's a sad situation. Can I say one minute? So. My name is Richard West, and I live on the corner.
We have two other people signed up to speak.
Gotcha.
The next person to sign up is Gillian Conley.
Okay. Good evening, city councillors. Welcome, Kip Coso, and congrats on your reelection, Jessica. Sorry not to be here, Shirley. My name's Julia Conley, and I'm a resident of Durango, and I also work with the unhoused community. And I'm here tonight because I'm pretty heartbroken by what I've witnessed recently in our community. Over the past month, I sit alongside Lieutenant Zach Farnham, Deputy Sheriff Chris Burke, Sam Engleston, Officer David Cunningham, Ranger Tosh Black, Ranger Mango, Code Enforcement Officer Steve Barkley, and others as they cleared camps behind the tech center, places that had been a home to about like 10 to 20 of our unhoused neighbors through the winter. What I saw was painful. These camps had already been stripped bare. There had been no dumpster there throughout the winter, nor a toilet. And remaining was just a disarray of broken pieces of people's lives. These officers, compassionate people doing their best, were forced to walk through waste, carry heavy loads down a steep hillside, and dismantle what little shelter remained. I was there too, trying to help people in any way we could and figure out what to do next. Calling the shelter to see if they would change their band status for folks, or merely handing out a water bottle, making another referral, or lifting many suitcases down the hillside. It felt like walking through a disaster zone. It was really eerie and super unsettling. And I don't think this is how a community should treat its people. We're asking law enforcement to carry out an impossible task, to criminalize someone's existence. And they have no answer to the repeated question, where can I go? City has no answer. County has no answer. And I've witnessed the strain that this has on these workers. I know they want to be kind, but they're forced into a system that treats people just like the trash. We're asking our unhoused neighbors to do the impossible as well. Show up to appointments, find a job, stay sober, all while being pushed further and further away from help. Think about your most stressful move. Imagine doing it all by yourself, not sure where you're going, and not sure if any of the people you love will be able to be there. And this is all happening while our current administration is proposing cuts of 880 million to Medicaid and 26.7 billion from housing programs. What is Durango's plan for managing our homeless population that is certainly growing? I know we're all feeling that, including Frank. Without a managed camp, we're not just failing, we're actively harming people, and we're wasting the energy. and we're wasting the energy and empathy of our officers on something that breaks everyone involved. We can do better, and we have to do better. Thanks.
The next person signed up is Joel Birdy.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Joel Birdy. I'm a resident of Durango. I'm a clinical social worker, and I also work with the unhoused community. Just good to be addressing the new form of council here, and also here to really highlight the need for the council to prioritize action towards a managed camp here in Durango for the unhoused community. And with this, just wanting to recognize the relief that we've all felt today and yesterday with the rain. And I think with that relief, we have to recognize where the fear comes from, and it's really the fear of fire. Nobody wants to see this town or our forest burn in the summer. You know, this town feeds all of us in the hard work that we do. And frankly, this town can't afford the cost to fight the fire if it starts on city land. And so the cost consequences have been explicitly acknowledged across city, county, open space workers, law enforcement, firefighters, and other civil servants across city and county. Now, after the LA fires this fall, local law enforcement and fire department have made it very clear just how serious fire prevention and punishment is going to be this summer. And we expect this to be true amongst the unhoused and the housed community. However, for the unhoused community, getting moved along or fined or jailed or starting a fire isn't going to stop people from making fires. You know, a rule goes up against people right now, and people are going to go against it. We, by now, we know that making more rules against the unhoused community is not going to stop homelessness. So by not offering a managed camp where fires can be mitigated, we're actually putting the entire community at risk. And yes, not everybody would go to a managed camp, but we would reduce the chance of these incident fires by 80%, and trash and public safety would also be mitigated. And these were some of the same concerns with Purple Cliffs, as well as what this gentleman here was mentioning tonight. These things are also hugely mitigated with a managed camp. And again, these are issues acknowledged by both city and county officials who are doing the life-saving firefighting, who are cleaning up the camps, and no one blames them if they get resentful for this work they're having to be doing. So let this be an opportunity for the city and county to come together around the issue of the unhoused community and solutions therefore. Because besides all of the humanitarian issues that Julia just mentioned, frankly, neither the city or the county can afford to fight a fire this season. And again, I love this place and I don't want to see it burn. So please put this issue on the council agenda and start taking initiative to incentivize private landowners to use their land for a managed camp, or look back at Elkview, and know how you'll be strategic with city code to ensure that red tape does not become an excuse for an action. We can't stop these fires by trying just to move people along. Folks will build fires, and your employees' game of cat and mouse will just continue. Homelessness obviously isn't going away, especially with the current regime. So build a managed camp and save this town. It'll cost you so much less than seeing it burn. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No one else has signed up, Mayor? Which would bring us to item 14, Other New Business.
Would anybody like to add to Other New Business?
Sorry, I'm trying to think what Other New Business encompasses usually.
Yes, this is usually where the city council, if a councillor has an item that they'd like to place on the next agenda, they announce it, we place it on the next agenda for consideration for the council to vote on if it gets placed on an agenda.
Items for a study session would come out of here?
Yes.
So I'd like to propose another study session with a worker focus. I think we heard an awful lot from the businesses on minimum wage, and I felt that the voice on minimum wage affecting workers wasn't necessarily well represented. And then Professor Peach as well cited multiple studies that I just don't, I didn't get a chance to review or have any kind of an understanding of what those studies were, especially the Flagstaff study, so would like to throw that out.
So we'll put that on the agenda. It'll be under Other New Business. It'll be that specific item, and then the council will do a vote at the next agenda on determining whether that gets placed on a future study session or not.
Usually Kyle sends out an email asking for excused absences and items on, under New Business, so they can be here. So like, if you would have responded to that email and said, hey, I want to put on a worker-focused, one, it would be on here. We would all have seen it and been ready to either support or not support it, and the public would know that it was on there. Does that make sense?
No, sorry.
Okay. Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't have known.
But then it, but
It doesn't get voted on.
Next, that's because you didn't bring it up and it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
It'll be under New Business on the next council meeting, and then we'll vote on it.
The next council meeting would vote on it. It would be the study session in the following month, if there was only a one month that it got approved to be
Or longer, depending on how long they needed to research it. Mike researched that one for three months, getting all that information.
That usually is what happens, so we'll flash forward to the next council meeting. It's on, now that staff knows, I can give a timeframe to the council if they're discussing this, that this would be a timeframe that staff would need to get this ready. We could also ask some clarifying questions, like is there anyone specific in the workforce group that you'd like us to reach out to, to make sure they're included or not? And any clarifying questions we have, and then the council can vote to decide if that's something they want to place on the agenda.
There's a huge hurdle with the fact that information coming three months after the initial presentation, we'll be talking about 100 other things, and there'll be some just forgotten information on this, so was the mistake made that I didn't pay more attention to what the topic was during the study session, and I should have understood that it was a business-focused one without a worker focus to it?
I made the motion.
Okay.
I didn't ask for both sides. I had asked for the, for the business side of things, because I felt like I had the worker side of things. Does that make sense? And so when I made that motion, if you had been here, you could have been like, can we also get the other side? And we could have gotten it.
Yeah.
Sort of.
Okay, the direction, yeah, from the council on that item was specifically for the impacts on the businesses, and so that's what we followed as staff, was the direction from the council, which asked just on the impact of the businesses. That's why it was that way.
All righty, so just to round this out, okay, so right here at 14 New Business, you can suggest what you would like to put on the agendas, either for the study session or for council. Okay, so that's one way. Then the other way is that Kyle will send us an email about a week in advance, something like that?
It's the Wednesday before council meeting.
Okay.
So watch out for her.
I know that.
Then just slip it on there.
Okay. Still, the presentation happened today. I wouldn't have known a week ago.
Absolutely, perfectly fine. It just means that there's a little bit of a delay. That's what it is, because it would have to come at the next council meeting, and that's it. Just clarification.
Do you have something, Dave?
Yes. Move to direct staff to look into and suggesting amendments regarding the bid board member qualifications that we went over in our study session today.
That one's already going to come to you in the introduction of ordinance.
Oh, it is.
Because they're a component unit, and that's what they wanted. We just wanted to make sure you knew what it was before it
Oh, so he wasn't suggesting that was actually going to be coming towards?
That's his recommendation that he was going to bring, and since they're a component unit, I don't want to stand in the way of that. We just thought it would be a better way of just inform the council of what they were looking for, so as it comes on your agenda, you had a background of it.
I see, so that'll come at our future meeting with those amendments?
Starting next two weeks, the introduction of the ordinance, we have to work with bid, but I think the city attorney already has the information they need.
We've been working with him for several months. He is not in a rush to get it accomplished. So, and we stand ready to draft the ordinance and have it for you guys at the next meeting now that you've heard the study session on it.
Okay, great, thanks.
And just as a point of clarification, this ordinance will not affect the interview team that'll be appointing people to the current vacancies on the bid board.
All right, so I think, go ahead.
Are you asking a question?
No, I said this ordinance won't affect those.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, great. There wasn't a question that we need to clarify, so, okay, great.
Okay, just one more point here for Kip. Okay, so what will happen after the appointment of these boards is that Kyle will send out suggested times when you guys can meet with your different boards, so pay attention to that. And then she can always change them if you can't make that appointment. If there's, if there's nothing else, and I think we're adjourned.